The Committee of the Whole, July 25th. And may I ask for a roll call, please? Thank you.
Jacobson, Fanukin.
Here.
Markort.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Noriko.
Here.
Baker.
Favor.
Here.
Ray.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. We have several considerations on our agenda this evening. The first, I'll turn to Emerald Ashbore Management Program Update. Director Holdeman.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. You may recall, in May of this year, Council approved a contract extension for Emerald Ashbore treatment to True Green. This is the second of two one-year extensions, or the third year that they've been performing this contract. At that time, Alderman Jacobson asked for an update on the EAB, or Emerald Ashbore Management Program, and we're pleased to provide that update this evening. I'll start with a brief background, and we'll talk a little bit about the EAB Management Plan that was adopted in 2011. We'll then review the activities that we've performed over the last six years, and end with some recommendations for going forward. By way of background, the Emerald Ashbore is a green beetle that feeds on ash trees. The adults tend to eat the foliage near the top of the tree. The infants, or larvae, embed themselves under the bark, and there's no known effective cure for EAB, or preventative method of saving ash trees once they're infected with EAB. The slide that you see is a map showing the location of all of our trees in the city right-of-way and on city property. In other words, these are the trees that the city is responsible for maintaining. There are about 8,000 of these trees. About 1,300 are ash trees, or about 16 percent. Those are the trees that are shown in the darker green on your map. The presence of the Emerald Ashbore was confirmed in the spring of 2011, and in response, the Public Works Department developed an EAB Management Plan and presented that plan to Council. The plan is based on a proactive treatment of EAB in order to reduce the economic and aesthetics impacts on the city. The primary economic impact on the city is the cost to take down the dead trees from the EAB. For the community, the impacts include reductions in home value, safety issues, and an overall quality of life. The EAB Management Plan sets forth a strategy to proactively treat EAB in order to reduce the number of ash trees that are dying on an annual basis. So if we had done nothing, we would have had all of our ash trees dying in four or five years. That would have cost a significant amount of money to remove those. So the strategy is to prolong the life so we reduce the overall cost on an annual basis to remove the trees. The slide you see now is a table that summarizes our activities over the last six years. You see in the upper left, the number of trees in 2011 was 1,294. That was from an inventory done at that time. So in fiscal year 2011, we removed 187 trees. Those were the trees, the ash trees, at our nursery on Dresser Road, and we did that work in-house. So that gave us a remaining number of 1,107. We were not treating for Emerald Ashbore at that time, nor were we treating in 2012. We also removed 91 trees, so that we had 1,016 trees remaining in 2012. So you can see, that's how the table progresses. In 2013 and 14 was when we implemented our program, and we removed several trees that year. We treated 865 in 2014 and 932 in 2013. The cost of about $10,000. We removed about $27,000 worth of trees. At that time, we were using an application that is a ground application. So we apply the pesticides around the tree, and it absorbs into the ground and is taken up through the moisture into the tree. If you remember, 2013 was a very dry year, and because of that, this process was highly ineffective. And so in 2015, we moved to a different technique, one in which is, we use a chemical called triage, in which we actually inject it into the tree. That treatment has proven much more effective, although it's a little bit more expensive, and we now have a core of 610 trees which we're treating on an annual basis at a cost of around $25,000 per year. This slide shows the treatment using the triage process. On the left, the technician has bored holes into the base of the ash tree and around it, and put in a port, and now he's connecting the tubing to those ports. And on the right-hand side, he's pressurizing the pesticide to be injected into the tree. And so using that technique, it's much more effective. This map shows the ash trees. The trees that have been, ash trees that have been treated are shown in green, those removed in black, and the gray ones are ones that are in a decline stage such that we're no longer treating them because we really can't reverse the infestation that they've undertaken. So that's kind of where we are today. One of the examples of the positive result is shown in this slide. This is a resident in the O'Noles neighborhood, and this resident, a few years back, asked us to remove the tree. It was, the canopy, the top of the canopy was missing, and as you can see on the right, there was major infestation by the larvae into the tree. However, with the application of the triage process, this tree has come back strong and is one of the 610 trees that we're now treating once every other year. In summary, the Public Works Department recommends that we continue the program that we're on of about $25,000 a year in treatment of these 610 core trees, and removal of the other 150 or so that will be declining over the next two or three years. At that point, we may be able to reduce some of the treatment and remove the last of the ash trees. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman, Marick.
With the treatment, how long does a tree survive typically?
Yeah. Mark, do you want to? I have, Mark Espy is our Street Operations Superintendent, who's the expert on EAB.
Far from expert. When you treat with triage, the chemical application's good for about three years before you have to reapply. If you continue that program every three years, that tree can survive indefinitely.
Oh, okay.
It's just an ongoing treatment, and the question would be, do you want to continue treatments forever, or do you want to slowly start to wean yourself off the program? But as long as you keep treating.
So it becomes almost like a chronic disease?
In a sense.
Okay. And how many of the trees that you're treating are at a point that you think you will have to wean them off because you didn't get to them soon enough, or they didn't respond, or whatever?
The 610 trees that we're currently treating are all very, very healthy trees.
Oh, okay.
The trees that are on the no-treat list will be the ones that Director Holdeman said that we'll eventually have to take down. But if Council continues to support the program, we can continue to treat the 610 trees forever.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Alderman Baker.
I was in on the ground floor of, I don't know how many were still in the Council, when we took the first look at this and figured out what action should be taken. And I remember the then-city manager, Mark Bernanke, and I debating one-on-one on several issues, but one of them was they, he had planned on just giving up, like many of the communities in towards Chicago, and they were going to budget $70,000 a year for 10 years. I don't know if that ever made any pass his door, but that was what he had told me, and I was vehemently opposed to giving up. And I'd say kudos to the previous councils for, and this was a very good summary of what happened, in that year that it was dry. Unfortunately, we did lose some. But the one thing to think about why I say indefinitely, you keep doing it, there's two things. One, I think a Realtor will probably tell you, when I was a Realtor in real estate class 30, 40 years ago, a long time ago, they told us a good tree was worth $10,000. So you've got $6 million in assets we're still protecting. And when you also look at $70,000 a year for 10 years, you're taking out trees that may be over 100 years old, and you can't replace those. But I'm assuming that of the 610, many of those great trees are in your program, and that's why you chose to continue with those.
Correct.
And yes, to do the triage and directly input it, that was, that's kind of like the silver bullet, the magic bullet, and I'm glad that that happened. But I've got no problem with what's happened as far as saving some, because the year after we started doing it, it was easy to drive to Aurora and see complete trees. I mean, you could drive down the streets, there were no trees, they were all dead, because they didn't do anything. And then the second reason is, it was speculated many years ago, and I bet we still don't know, but maybe you have some scientific updates, is that there was a thought that this was going to cross our country like a firestorm, burn itself out, and there wouldn't be any reason somewhere down the road to even treat anymore. That, I don't know if they've figured out if that can happen yet. Is that something you've read about?
The pressure is down considerably from what it was at the beginning. They said it's kind of like a big storm surge. It's going to come through there, it's going to peak, it's going to go back. The trees that we're currently treating, the Emerald Ashbore, won't feed on those trees, so as the rest of the trees decline, they're running out of food sources, so they have to move on. You know, you're still going to have some that are going to live in private trees and those types of issues, but the pressures are down now.
Other discussion and questions? Okay. The one question I had is, have we given thought to a replacement program?
We're currently in process of creating a program here.
Okay.
Tim, Tim, or Alderman. Mr. Holdeman and I are working on the program right now.
Okay. So that may come to us as soon as FY '17?
Yes.
And dovetail with continued treatment of the Emerald Ashbore?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, thank you for the report this evening. Moving to location quotient and employment statistics, I'll turn to Joe Ellen and Jason. Jason?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm here to present some research that I've conducted in regards to employment in the city of DeKalb. We looked at a couple of different types of statistics, the first being what's called a location quotient. We also looked at general statistics, which are aggregate numbers and breakdowns by industry. And we've also looked at inflow and outflow statistics for jobs. For those of you that aren't familiar with a location quotient, what that is, is it's a comparison of ratios. So we look at the number, the percentage of workers in a specific industry here in the city, and then we compare that ratio to the percentage of employer, workers in that same industry against a benchmark. And the three benchmarks that we used were the county, the state, and the nation. So if you flip through the packet that was provided, looking at the general statistics first, we did a comparison of both those working in the city and then those living in the city that are employed. And what we found was, for those that are working in the city of DeKalb, 76 percent of those employed are concentrated in five industries. So those five industries are educational services, retail trade, healthcare and social assistance, accommodation and food services, and administration and support, with the remaining 24 percent being in the other industries, which would be the 20 North American Industrial Classification sectors. There's 20 of those. So you can see that 76 percent in those five industries shows a high concentration, and when we look at the actual people that are living in DeKalb and employed, we see a more balanced workforce. You don't see that same concentration. If you flipped page three, you can see the breakdown, and although you still have the same top five industries, you don't have the amount of concentration as you do with those that are employed within the city. The interesting thing is, when we compare these same industries to the location quotient scores, which you can find on page eight, nine of the memo, this is what kind of gets interesting. The point of doing a location quotient is so that we can identify sector strengths within the city, and from that, we can use that information for recruitment purposes. And when we're going out to market the city to specific companies, we can find out what our strengths in those sectors are. Industries tend to like to locate close to each other for reasons, cutting down on transportation costs and co-tenancy, so we can kind of target the recruitment efforts into industries that we think would succeed here in DeKalb, and with the limited resources that we have. So looking at page eight, this is those that are employed within the city, and as you can see, educational services has extremely high LQ. With LQ scores are around one, shows an even ratio with the benchmark, and then anything above 1.25 is going to be an industry's strength, and anything below .75 generally indicates some sort of good or service that you are importing into your local economy because it isn't present there. So as you can see, there's several that are falling well below .5, and that indicates that those industries don't exist compared to the benchmarks that we used. And as I said, the three benchmarks were the county, the state, and the nation, and these charts here are an average of those benchmarks. Comparing it to the local workforce, which are, again, are those that are living in the city of DeKalb and employed, you can see that there's, most industries are coming in right around one, so we're very comparable to the benchmarks in terms of the local workforce and the skills that are here in DeKalb. So we can use that, again, to market the city. One of the things that the city does when we market ourselves is show the strengths and the talent that is existing within our local workforce. And I think moving forward, one of the things that we're going to do is, we're going to work closely with the university, and we want to align ourselves with the strength of the university as well. I looked at some basic research on LinkedIn, and I wanted to see where NIU graduates were going to work, and in what sectors they were going to go, they were working in. And in the top 20 employers, you can look at the sectors within those employers, and information technology came up in just about every single one of them. It's the number four sector for graduates at Northern Illinois, and as you can see with the LQ score, we do have a presence of about 1.5 LQ, so that's above average, and that indicates that we can continue to build on that strength. The second portion, or the third portion that we looked at was the job flow statistics for the city of DeKalb, and some of the discussions that have been taking place indicate that there's a concern with the number of people that are choosing not to live and work in DeKalb, and I think with the data did support that. If you look on page four, the chart at the bottom, you can see that the blue line indicates that there is a steady decline since 2002 of people that are choosing to live and work in DeKalb. And the green line is those that are employed in DeKalb but living outside, which is climbing. You compare that to the number of jobs in DeKalb, which is the chart above that, you see that as we've gained jobs over the last few years, the people that are taking those jobs are not choosing to live in DeKalb. So moving forward, another thing that we'd like to do within the economic development area is to look at potential incentives for residential, new home residential, and then redevelopment of existing residential. And we'd like to see if we can figure out a way to incentivize people, both that are employed in DeKalb to live here, but also if it's possible for us to take some of the graduates coming out of the university and convince them to stay here as well. With the information technology sector, it's one of those industries that you don't necessarily have to be located close to where you work. You can kind of work from anywhere, it's a remote industry. So I think that if we can show that there's a high quality of life at an affordable price, which is also an advantage for the city, that we may be able to incentivize that as well. One of the concerning things that we did find was that many of the jobs here in DeKalb are low-skill, low-wage jobs. On page five, you see that the breakdown of monthly income shows that we have above the benchmark in number of jobs that pay less than $1,250 a month, which is $15,000 a year, and the poverty line is just above that. So for families that are not just single, or single-income families, those people would be well below the poverty line. What we are seeing, though, is that people that are living in DeKalb and working elsewhere are taking the higher-paying category. So that indicates that the people that are in DeKalb have high-paying jobs, so they're choosing to live in DeKalb even though they have a good wage. And what we wanted to do from that data is look specifically where those that are living in DeKalb and working, where they're going to work, and then also the reverses of that as well. Where are the workers in DeKalb coming from? And what we found from the two areas is, those that are coming into the city are coming from areas such as Aurora and Naperville and Rochelle, so they're traveling along the I-8 corridor to get here. And then for those leaving the city to go work, we're seeing that they're going to the Tri-Cities area, the Fox Valley area. So there's a couple of things that we can look at further from this to try to determine whether or not, are those individuals choosing to live here because it's more affordable, or are they being priced out of those markets because they're more expensive than here? So we do need to do a little bit more research. So from this, from the data that we have here and that I presented, like I said, we're going to come forward in the future with some incentive policies, both residential side, and then also, how can we incentivize specific sectors? And what I'd like from you guys is to discuss what I presented to you, and you've had time since it was at the last Council, Committee of the Whole meeting to look over this. And you've had time since it was, was at the last council, community of the whole meeting to look over this. And what would you like us to bring forward for further research? And what considerations would you like us to make for incentive policies?
Are there questions for Jason? Input that council would like to give staff at this time? Observations that anyone has on the location study? Tony?
In, on page five, the monthly income. I just know that, you know, hearing in previous council meetings where, where the level of income, the median income in DeKalb and when we've thrown out, or when someone else has thrown out a, a statement of what the income is, the response is typically, well, that's, in the census data, that's NIU students. So are you saying this data has taken out the students? Or are we still saying this is blended data with the students? And the majority of income that's 1,250 or less may not necessarily be residents of DeKalb. They might just be students of DeKalb?
That is, that is a consideration that needs to be taken into account. The students are, are considered in the census. And the data that was, I used for this research is census data. One thing that I did look at though was the census, individual census tracts. And the, though there isn't a specific census tract for the university, it also includes some of the surrounding area. Comparing that to other census tracts in the city for breakdown of wages, while that was a little bit lower, it wasn't substantially lower. So I would still say that in, in general, you would still have a pretty low overall wage within the city. One of the interesting things, if you look at this chart though, is the inflow category. Those are people coming into DeKalb to work. So if the census data considers students as being employed and living in DeKalb, then they wouldn't be in that category. They would be considered in the interior category. So what that, what that chart is telling us is that individuals that are in the low-wage category are actually people that are coming into the city from outside the city.
Thank you.
Alderman, Narayko?
I know that Loyola University in Chicago has had an incentive program to encourage faculty and staff to reside near the university. And I don't know, you know, specific details in terms of incentives provided by the city also. But them, I, I know the program, from what I've read, has been very, very successful. So that might be an avenue to look at.
One of the things that we are planning to look at is an employer-assisted living program. Those incentives are offered by the state though. So that's something that we can, we can work with employers to connect them with the right people within the state organization.
Other input or discussion? Okay, I would encourage council members, as you consider the information as presented this evening. Again, Ellen and Jason are open to input. Jo Ellen as well, our community development staff are certainly open to input and suggestions from any council input. Thank you, Jason. Okay, moving to discussion regarding city council voting requirements. I'll turn to City Attorney Frieders.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the past couple of months, there have been a number of times when we have brought this up and indicated this item would be forthcoming. We wanted to share with the council a recent court decision from Illinois that has an impact on future interpretation of the city council's votes in some limited circumstances. And have an opportunity for the council to discuss that and potentially direct changes in your code of ordinances that would impact how your votes could be interpreted. As this is something that relates directly to both the process by which votes are taken and the interpretation of them, it is something that our city clerk has been involved in. We've had an opportunity to discuss the case and I believe she's independently reviewed it and may have her own conclusions on it. In short, the case which is cited in the memo before you is from Crystal Lake. Crystal Lake has a city council comprised of seven members, so six aldermen and a mayor. Crystal Lake in 2013 had a city council meeting where they were anticipating adopting their annual tax levy for the 2013 tax year. At that meeting, they had, as it turned out, five members present, including the mayor. Three of the aldermen, so three of the four aldermen that were present, voted in favor of their tax levy. The fourth alderman that was present voted against the tax levy. So the resulting vote was three to one. It was not a vote that required a supermajority. There was not a tie. And a majority of the aldermen holding office had not voted in favor of the proposition. So it was not a circumstance where the Crystal Lake mayor's vote was called. So the end vote was three to one, and the city council moved forward thereafter and the taxes were levied. Sometime thereafter, a group of taxpayers filed a lawsuit. And in the lawsuit, they said, you have a seven-person city council, and you had this very important vote on your tax levy. And on that vote, only three members of the city council voted in favor of it. There's a state statute that says for an ordinance to be passed, it requires a concurrence of a majority of the aldermen then holding office, or a concurrence of the corporate authorities, including the mayor. So the taxpayers were saying essentially, you needed to have at least four people vote in favor of this ordinance for it to pass. And you only had three people vote in favor of it. So we don't believe your ordinance successfully passed. We think your 2013 tax levy was invalid. And we think we should get those taxes refunded back to us. That case went to the circuit court up in Crystal Lake in McHenry County. And the McHenry County Circuit Court said, we agree with the taxpayers. We don't think this was a valid vote. We think that the taxes should be reversed and everybody should get their money back for the year. And from there, it went to the Second District Appellate Court in Elgin. The Second District Appellate Court is also the court that would hear any cases coming out of DeKalb. So we are a part of the Second District for appellate purposes in Illinois. The Second District looked at Crystal Lake and said, Crystal Lake is a home rule community. They have by ordinance adopted Roberts Rules of Procedure. If you look in the memo, we provided an excerpt from their ordinance as compared to our city of DeKalb ordinance on Roberts Rules. And you'll note that they're almost word-for-word identical. The ordinance says they use Roberts Rules to the extent that they are not inconsistent with Illinois law, basically. That's about exactly what our codes say. And the Second District Appellate Court looked at this and said, well, under Roberts Rules, unless it's a really extreme measure like suspending the rules, for example, just about anything you can do, you can do with a majority vote. So we believe that this home rule community's adoption of Roberts Rules means that a majority vote is all it takes for them to pass action, which means that a three-to-one vote is adequate to pass their tax levy. So on that basis, the Second District Appellate Court upheld Crystal Lake's 2013 tax levy with a three-to-one vote. So three of the seven members of city council voting in favor of the proposition. As we look at the city of DeKalb, that same analysis comes over to the city of DeKalb. So prospectively, if you had a meeting where you did not have the full complement of the council here, and you had a majority of a quorum vote in favor of some action that could be viewed as being adequate to take any action, including pass an ordinance. Now, I want to stress that to date, this has never come up in the city council's operation. There are not any ordinances or actions that the council has taken where this interpretation of this case has been relied upon. It is not a circumstance that has arisen in the past. We're not looking to revisit or review past actions by the council. But this is an important case that has a significant impact on future decisions of the council if you should have a meeting where fewer than the full council is present and you should have a contentious vote arise. In essence, the direction from the appellate court was, this is home rule community. So we believe they could adopt a different rule from the general rule that would otherwise be applicable. So what we are suggesting to you is that it'd be appropriate for you to discuss this and review it and establish from a policy perspective what you think your voting threshold should be on something like ordinances. From a practical perspective, the most likely or most viable options coming out of this would be either adopt something like the Crystal Lake policy, which would be leaving your ordinances as-is and say, a majority of a quorum is adequate under Roberts Rules and it's adequate under what our appellate court has told us, so we're going to follow that. Or you could say, we want to strictly follow the state statute and adopt an amendment to our local code and make it clear that home rule or not, we're going to follow the state statute, which requires a concurrence of a majority of the aldermen holding office. We as staff don't have a recommendation on that policy decision beyond saying, we think it's important that you evaluate what your answer is. And we codify that before this comes up in a meeting. Our goal is to ensure that everyone, both on the council and in the public, understands what the rules applicable to your votes are, that when you vote, there aren't surprises, and that everyone shares in a common understanding of the impact of your votes. And so that's why we're bringing this to you to law for that discussion. The Crystal Lake case itself, again, we provided the citation in the memo. If you put that into any search engine, you can come up with half a dozen different legal sites that will give you that opinion for free. And it's really not a complicated decision. There is no complex issue of litigation involved in the case. The court marshals through Crystal Lake's ordinances, which are online, like our ordinances. You can compare those directly to our code. So this really isn't a complex legal issue, but it's an important policy issue. And it's one that we feel the council should weigh in on. So we've provided that background in the memo. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on it. And again, it's not something that has arisen in the past, but it has the potential to arise in the future.
Are there questions of Attorney Frieders? Alderman, Narayko?
Do you see it as a protection for the city council? The fact that ordinances come to the committee of the hall and then there are two readings? So there is really ample opportunity to, both for the public to comment and individual aldermen to comment?
So this wouldn't impact, in any case, it wouldn't impact how ordinances are brought before the council. And I should note, Crystal Lake doesn't have two readings, unlike DeKalb. They just have passing an ordinance. They don't have a first reading and then passage. So I don't view it as impacting that process. The impact that it could have would be if you had a city council meeting where not all of the council was present, it could reduce the vote requirements necessary to take some action. In this case, necessary to approve an ordinance. And approval of an ordinance, in terms of the law that a city council can establish, an ordinance is the highest level of law. It carries the most significance. They, they take precedence over statutes, over resolutions or other actions of the council. So understanding that it could have that potential impact, we feel is critical to the council having a clear understanding of your voting.
Other discussion? Alderman, Baker?
Couple of questions and an immediate thought. In the past, DeKalb was well-known for three student aldermen and a mayor platform that if they could ram stuff through on just three or four votes, or three votes, I mean, I see that as a problem. But, but that was countered by imported votes needing six out of eight. So I would hesitate to compare that we could do what Crystal Lake does. Three questions. One, just for clarification for all of us, under our current rules, how many have to be here for a quorum?
Five.
Okay.
So under-
Mayor may not be the mayor included in that five. It doesn't matter?
That's correct.
The next question is, because this is something that, I've seen it go both ways so many times that I need to know, and I think everyone would like to know, is when you have seven seated aldermen, not, how can you ever have a tie? It's easy to understand if one is resigned and there's a gap, then there's only six. And that's, that would be a comparison directly to, to Crystal Lake. And the second part of that question is, should we debate the idea of six wards or eight wards instead of seven? Depending on how this answer comes up.
So on your question of a tie, so this case doesn't have any impact on the question of a tie. But a tie could arise, as it did at the last meeting, where a majority of the aldermen voted in favor of a proposition and the mayor voted against it. And that created a four-four tie. So under the Illinois municipal code, when a majority of the aldermen have voted in favor of a proposition, so here, four of seven, the mayor shall vote. And that's why the city clerk called his vote at the last meeting, and his vote tied that up. As this case would have an impact on the council, if you had a meeting where, say, we only had a quorum present, where there were only five present, if we're following the decision in this case and saying, we follow Roberts Rules and that's applicable to ordinances as well, and let's say there's an ordinance that is here on second reading, that ordinance could conceivably be passed by a three vote, three votes in favor. Because that would be a majority of a quorum, which is what the Second District Appellate Court upheld in the Crystal Lake case. So we're not talking about a case where, we're not talking about, for example, a waiver of second reading. We're not talking about amending the budget, which requires a supermajority vote. We're talking about this straight approval of an ordinance. So it's a pretty narrow circumstance that this would apply in the way it did in Crystal Lake. It would be if we had a meeting with fewer than all of the aldermen here and we had a ordinance that was present on second reading that had the potential to pass with a, a small vote.
I'm not real comfortable with that based on the track record. I've watched in thirty, forty years in DeKalb. But I, I guess I need to reword on, I'm, the mayor, if it's a three-three vote and there's an alderman missing, how does our ordinance read? Does he, does he get to use his veto power and have up to forty-eight hours, like the state law says, to decide if he wants to kick it back or just let it go through? Or does he have the right to vote at that moment, under our current rules?
So under state statute, it, so using that example, let's assume that there are six aldermen present and one absent. And the resulting vote is three-three, then that would be one of the three times when the mayor's vote would be called. So that would be a tie vote, the mayor's vote would be called. And the mayor could vote aye or nay on that given proposition. The mayor could separately veto, I mean, the veto power of the mayor exists separate from whether or not the mayor's vote is called.
But if we go to Robert, Roberts Rules, it could be a two-to-two. And he could vote to break the tie on that.
So if we take our hypothetical city council meeting where only five members are present and the mayor's one of them, and the vote on the ordinance comes back as two-to-two, that would be a tie vote and the mayor's vote would be called. If the mayor voted in favor of the action, then it would be three-two in favor. That would be a majority vote under Roberts Rules. And applying this case, that would be enough to pass an ordinance if it was up on second reading. So that's the kind of circumstance that could conceivably arise. Again, it, it hasn't arisen in recent past, but it could arise.
So if we left things the way we're doing them, a, a three-two would get it from first reading to second reading? But we need more people here to get it passed to second reading? And it just gets postponed if you only have five?
No, what, what we're saying is, under this decision, this decision interprets a city code just like DeKalb's, where they say Roberts Rules and they're home rule. DeKalb says Roberts Rules and we're home rule. So if this came up, if we had a city council meeting tonight with five of you present and we had an ordinance that was here on second reading and the resulting vote on that ordinance was three in favor and one against, that would not be a time when the mayor's vote would be called because there's not a tie. There's not a majority of aldermen voting in favor of it. The resulting vote would be three to one. So three of the eight members of the city council would have voted in favor of passing this ordinance and, and making it law. And in that circumstance, what this case says is, that's enough of a vote because it's a majority of a quorum. So I can tell you, there were not a lot of municipal attorneys out in the world before this decision that were saying, this is how it's going to be decided. When this decision first came out from the circuit court and the circuit court said, Crystal Lake, your 2013 tax levy is invalid and you have to give all that money back. There were a lot of attorneys out there that said, this is what we thought was going to happen. And there were newspaper stories written about it and articles written about it. Everybody saying, this is what happens when you don't count the heads very carefully. And the appellate court decision changed that and said, we're going to follow Roberts Rules. And that surprised a lot of people. It has an impact on this council prospectively, which is why we're bringing- It has an impact on this council prospectively, which is why we're bringing it to you. So to be clear, if you say, "We don't want a 3-1 vote. We don't want to have a meeting with five people here and have three people passing an ordinance." And you give us that direction, we'll come back and we'll say, "We're going to follow the state statute, and we're going to not have Roberts' rules apply for that kind of vote."
That would be where I'm coming from, but everybody else should weigh in.
Alderman Finuché.
Dean, the court cases not impact any of the instances where under city code, like 2.04 and 2.13, where a supermajority is required, correct? Where still six would be required, you couldn't have, you have, like typically, we have to have six of eight, but let's say only six of us were here, would a 4-2 vote then be allowed, or would we have to, would that not make a passage?
No, where we have, the two sections of city code you're referencing talk about a supermajority vote based on the number of aldermen then holding office. So it wouldn't be the number in attendance at a meeting, it would be how many are on the council at that moment.
So then, what we're talking about this evening would not impact that at all. We'd still have those requirements.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other input discussion?
If I may follow up, then, Mr. Mayor, I think, you know, when the extraordinary circumstances require that two-thirds vote, I think that handles a majority of the exceptional cases. Where on regular ordinances, I think that I'd be comfortable with the majority of a quorum being able to vote, as the Crystal Lake case cites, rather than making a change to what we do now.
Okay. Which would indicate a majority of a quorum being three could pass.
If there were five of us here, right.
Okay. Other thoughts? Tony, I see you now.
I just, I agree with Alderman Finuché.
Okay. Alderman.
I agree also, partially in the interest of keeping city council business moving forward, keeping the city business moving forward, and also recognizing that, you know, with the ordinances coming again before the committee of the hall, the first reading and the second reading, I think it gives us, the council members, ample opportunity to understand if there are significant concerns about an ordinance, if we need to send something back for review or revision. So I'm inclined to, you know, go along with a Roberts' rule supporter.
Alderman Stone?
I'm kind of debating back and forth, but the reality is, if only three people vote for something, and the other five really were not in favor of it, do the other five really have the option of bringing that ordinance back, or asking for it to be reconsidered or brought back at a future time, and could defeat that ordinance? So, you know, from a practical standpoint, I think most items could pass with a three vote, but if the other were really against it, they would have the option to really veto it later on.
No.
Surely would.
Absolutely not. They have to be in the majority for reconsideration, only a majority person.
You can bring it back, you can request for something, for reconsideration occurs in the next meeting. I'm saying down the road, in three meetings, two meetings, you could ask for that to be put on the agenda, and there could be a new proposal that would change that. Nothing is done forever. I mean, any of our votes can be changed down the road. It's just the procedure that's followed to change that ordinance or that procedure.
But my concern is, if it's an action item, and that action's already taken place, and I can specifically think back when there was a huge debate over where we were going to draw the line with Cortlandt and DeKalb for the city limits, and we wanted it reconsidered, and we weren't able to figure out how to get that done before it got signed by Sparrow. And so things happen before you get a chance, unless-
Yes, true, true.
So you kind of made my point.
Yeah, there could be things that cannot be undone because of a sign or action taken because of that vote. That's usually not the case for an ordinance. But you're right, that is something that needs to be considered.
So Bob, are you suggesting you're comfortable with the current?
Well, you know, I guess I want more time to consider this. I'm not saying that I want to change right now. I think this is something we need to continue to think about, and, you know, this is our first discussion on it. And to make a snap decision one way or another, I don't think is appropriate. I do think we need to consider the things that have been brought up today.
Okay. Mike, do you have thoughts you'd like to offer?
That Roberts guy. No, I, boy, part of me is, it's kind of logical that you have seven people, and so four is a majority, you know? So, you know, if, that's where I kind of lean towards, you know, where it takes four people to do anything. But if, I don't know. Yeah. So I lean toward that way, I guess.
Okay.
To have a minimum of four, one way or the other. But that creates an option for, then you always have your tie, and then your, you know, whatever. So we're kind of in one of those conundrums here, where you can have four people vote for something, either nay or yea, and then a tie come in, or the other way, and then have it still pass. Or be defeated. Right. So whichever way you go, you're kind of, half the people are going to be upset one way, or another half are going to be upset the other way. Right? Yeah? So there's not a really good way to get around it.
I have a question.
Alderman Baker?
For the staff. I don't know how Crystal Lake is, but Alderman Marquardt brought that up. If you have seven wards, and that's how you represent the city, one-seventh of the pie, not including the mayor, the mayor represents the whole community, the six wards in Crystal Lake, are any of them aldermen at large, or are they exactly like we do it, but just six?
I don't know the answer to that.
Because that could be, sometimes aldermen at large are all of them in some towns, I think. And sometimes it's a mix. That would change our thought and our debate considerably. I think we need to know that before we try to compare ourselves just with that one community, for instance. And like I suggested before, if we're going to try to be just like Crystal Lake, maybe we ought to change it to six wards, or bump it to eight. If we were at eight, I think, I was told Aurora are one of the communities just east of here. Every two years, each, they have actually four districts and two aldermen per district. So there's always a senior alderperson for each district, because every two years, one of the two comes up.
Looking, it appears though, Crystal Lake are elected at large, the mayor and city council.
Now, we're comparing apples and oranges. If we're going to try to copy them, we're nowhere near them. Completely different.
Okay. Let me ask, has staff heard enough preferences that you've got some direction?
At this point, I anticipate that we'll wait for any further comment or direction from council, and if there is any, then, again, under our current procedures, if any two members of the council ask for an item to come back, it comes back, and we can certainly prepare different options for council to consider if we hear that direction.
Okay. Okay.
So are we currently under the Crystal Lake rules, and if we want to make it four minimum, we have to make a decision?
That was our intention in bringing this to you tonight, was saying, here's a case from the past year, from our appellate court interpreting an ordinance that is almost word-for-word identical to ours. So as we try and interpret the impact of your votes, we follow the case law set down by the Illinois court system. And I should say again, that the city clerk has been really invaluable in participating in the discussion leading to this, and making sure that these issues are transparent and accessible to the public. So yes, the short answer to your question is, we follow the court decisions from the state of Illinois.
I'd like to request that we at least get Alderman Jacobson weighing in on it, but I think the issue really comes down to just carbon copy Crystal Lake, or require, as Alderman Marquardt pointed out, and I think we're all kind of debating, that instead of three being enough, it always has to be at least four. That's the way I look at it, but if, you know, I think, since it's just thrown at this moment, I think we need to digest this over the next two or three or four meetings. So let's wait till NIU gets back in session. They seem to feel like when something important happens and they're not in session, that we're leaving them out.
Okay. Alderman Marquardt?
So that would be like a supermajority of a quorum? So if we had five, and you have to have four, that would be?
I think it would be our recommendation to keep it as-
I mean, you'd keep it simple.
-simple as possible, and as little math involved as possible, so that everybody looks at the meeting and says, you know, for example, if your proposition is what the council goes forward with, people can look at the meeting and say, okay, we need four affirmative votes if not the full council is here. Or if it's a different way of looking at it, or if it's just a majority of a quorum.
So the KISS principle?
Well, yeah. I think we have to all debate amongst ourselves and let the public weigh in with us. Can we ever allow three people to make a decision, or should it be always at least four? And I think if you just keep it down to that simple debate, then, in a little bit of time here, in the three meetings or whatever, we might be able to feel comfortable. But right now, I don't think it's fair for us to compare ourselves directly to Crystal Lake, because all the aldermen are at large. And it's a different situation than the pie being divided seven ways, and possibly four or even five of the wards not being represented.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me then turn to public participation. Bessie, from Appleworth.
First of all, some of you are very soft-spoken. I don't know if it's because I'm getting older, or the blower is blowing, but I can't hear all of you all the time. So you may want to speak up a little. I could hear you, Mr. Marquardt. But the others, I couldn't hear, because you're very soft-spoken. It's very nice that you're soft-spoken, but it's kind of hard to hear you. The other thing, it was interesting to listen to the presentation about the employment statistics, and I was just wondering if, it sounds like something that maybe could be printed in the Chronicle with some charts and other graphics type of things, so as to inform the public, and maybe even on our website. I don't know where the young gentleman is. But, you know, to get some more input, because, you know, there were some interesting statistics that came about, you know, in listening to that. So just a suggestion. Regarding this, when this first came out, I, you know, read the memo here from the staff, and I started doing a little bit of research, and I found out pretty much what you're finding out in talking amongst yourselves right now. It's not that simple. There are many variables to making a good decision on this. I think Alderman Marquardt kind of is leaning in the right direction there, where you're thinking four is a majority. You want at least four people in favor of something before something is passed. I'm not so sure about this Crystal Lake, though. If I were living in Crystal Lake and a tax levy or an important proposition like that passed with a three vote out of a seven, I'd be kind of concerned, too. And I don't know, again, I don't know what their setup is. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right. I don't, I don't think you'd ever want to see that happening here. You want to prevent that. But my suggestion would be, and again, I just spent only about an hour or so on this, looking at this, and looking at some past information. I really think that you need to sit down and really discuss this in a lot more detail, and also get information of what, and I think I wrote to staff and to the clerk and to the city attorney, information of what it was like before the 2012 change in the mayoral vote. I think you need to get a little bit of historical background, and kind of look at what it was like, and how it has evolved over the last couple of years, because there have been some votes that have come under scrutiny of late, and you want to avoid that. And I think your ultimate goal would be to make it as clear as possible. And also to look at the city clerk, you may want to connect with some of the former city clerks who are, quite frankly, extremely well-versed in the history, and how even more, and no offense meant to any attorneys, but even more well-versed than attorneys are as far as vote and voting procedure, just as, you know, part of the background before you make your decisions. So I wouldn't jump into anything, you know, just really analyze it really, really well, and speak up. Okay?
Thank you, Bess.
Thanks.
Michael, how's your sheet?
Yeah, a couple things. Sometimes I boom on this thing, so I'm going to try to stay back. First things, guys, this is two years out of date, and this is your FOIA document. It's 2015 doc data. You're required by law to keep it up to date every fiscal year. So just a note, I just happened to look at, because I was curious to see if the FOIA document was kept up to date. It's part of the, I know you have a permanent person working on stuff. And so I wanted to make sure, just curious, because I saw you were looking over the vote, and we talked about the OMA and everything else. Well, this is outdated. The budget number, seventy-nine million, three-hundred-and-ninety-two, one-forty-three for fiscal year 2015. Is that your budget right now? It's supposed to be, it's required to be up to date. You have one-hundred-and-ninety-nine full-time and sixty-four part-time employees. Is that correct? No, it's not. We know that's not correct, because you have big debates over what's going on. So don't forget that you have to keep these things up to date, and your org chart's wrong. The other thing is, I just wanted to point out is that the county now has an incubator, and I have spent time with the county with my laboratory, which is one of the largest laboratories at NIU, and we are starting to work at how we can work out with the county on collaborating. Most of you guys don't understand that individual professors actually have initiative that they can do on their own. And so my laboratory is now going to work with this incubator, and I'm hoping some of you go in the city and take a look at what's going on, because it's exciting. It's well-done, it's well-thought-out, it's fast. They came and did it in less than a year. They didn't spend a lot of time debating in the background. Meetings at the university, they just did it, okay? So it might be useful for the city to just kind of, if you want to get involved in an incubator, kind of join in. Join with us. We're trying to do some neat stuff here in this town. So thank you, everybody, and let's see what we can do.
Thank you, Michael. All right. I, do we need anything of executive session before the regular meeting? We'll defer that till the end of the regular meeting. At this point, I would, I assume no one else from the public is wanting to speak at this time?
Sir?
Okay. I would-
I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Norreco. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marquardt. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie. I'll plan to convene the regular meeting after a short break. Let's try to be back by ten after, please. I'll go ahead and convene the regular meeting of City Council, July 25th, and ask for a roll call, please.
Jacobson? Fanoukian?
Here.
Marquardt?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. And I'll turn to Officer Pullos to come forward, lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have the agenda before us. Are there any additions, deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanoukian. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call, please.
Fanoukian?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Thank you. We have a public hearing this evening on the proposed body art establishment license for Out on a Wim. This is an action item under consent agenda as well this evening. At this point, let me open the public hearing. And City Attorney Frieders, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be happy to. There is currently operating within the city a body art establishment known as Out on a Wim at 127 East Lincoln Highway. They have been in operation there for many years and operating with a city-issued body art establishment license. In the time that they have operated, there have not been any complaints received by the city against them. There have not been any fines imposed or suspensions or revocation of their license. They've operated in accordance with all city codes to the best of our knowledge. From what we understand, the current ownership is changing, and there are new owners that are proposing to purchase the business and take it over as a running concern. That requires the issuance of a new license as the body art licenses, like liquor licenses, for example, they're not transferable. It's a new license that issues. The new, the prospective purchasers have gone through all of the conditions precedent to issuance of the license. They've done their background checks, and they've completed all the different reviews that staff would ordinarily do. They have a positive staff recommendation at this point. City Code does contemplate before the issuance of any license, there has to be a public hearing. So, that's the purpose of the public hearing tonight. We do have this on the agenda for consideration later this evening as an action item if the council is prepared to go forward with it, and if you're not, you certainly could delay it. We have reviewed this for compliance with all of the applicable parts of city code, including the setback distances from other establishments, and they do comply with all of the codes as written. Ultimately, it has a positive staff recommendation for issuance, but this public hearing is an opportunity for any members of the public to present any information or concerns or questions they may have regarding the license.
Okay. Let me turn to anyone wishing to speak at this point in the public hearing. Mr. Weinstock, come forward to the podium, please.
Good evening, Council and the city of DeKalb. I'm Kenny Weinstock, previous owner of Out on a Wim at 127 East Lincoln Highway in downtown DeKalb. Also doing business as Blue Moon Balloon Company. I opened Out on a Wim sixteen years ago with the idea that I could offer body piercing in a clean and professional environment and at affordable prices in DeKalb. Well, it turned into so much more. In 2009, I came before this council to ask you to lift the ban on tattooing. After many meetings with the city and with council's approval, Out on a Wim offered tattoos and body piercings and expanded our business. In 2010, Out on a Wim bought the Blue Moon Balloon Company and expanded that as well. At this time, in order to keep both businesses successful, I found it necessary to concentrate all my effort into one business. I chose to keep balloons in my future. So, after sixteen years, I realized that Out on a Wim, in order for it to remain open, it would take someone who was a true professional with skill for the art. They would have to be honest and reputable and clean and willing to give their best to this community. Today, my friend Barbie Duncan and Melissa Shaw are here to ask council for a body art establishment license for Out on a Wim. As I return my body art license, I ask that you, the city of DeKalb Council, approve the license for Barbie and Melissa. Barbie already has an outstanding reputation in this community and will continue to give great service in her new location. Melissa has been managing tattoo shops for years and is big on community service as well. I'm sure together, they will continue to give DeKalb the same great service Out on a Wim has for sixteen years. Blue Moon Balloon Company will still service DeKalb-Sycamore area out of their new location at 405 Lincoln Highway in Rochelle, Illinois. I want to thank this council and the people of this great city of DeKalb for sixteen great years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Dan Gallagher? Hello, councilmen and women. Thank you for serving DeKalb. I know it's a lot of time you put into this and a lot of pressure, too. I'm Dan Gallagher. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 66. I'm here tonight to ask that you not raise our, the fee that you want to raise.
Dan, I'm sorry. This is the public hearing on the body art establishment?
I apologize.
I'll call on your part when we get to that agenda item, and I'm...
Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in the public hearing on the licensing of the body art establishment for Out on a Wim? Okay, seeing no other individuals wishing to speak on that topic, I will close the public hearing. And we'll, as I mentioned, we'll come back to this item under our consent agenda this evening. Moving to special items, under proudly DeKalb, I'd like to ask Jerry Johns to come forward for the report on the Northern Illinois University Jerry Johns Literacy Clinic.
Good evening to all of you, and thank you so much for inviting me. On behalf of Dr. Lori Elish Piper, the dean of the College of Education at Northern Illinois University, I'm proud to be recognized for the work that we've done in DeKalb and surrounding communities. Now, it's time for a little minor quiz, like, how many of you ever heard of the literacy clinic besides what I just said? Uh-huh. Well, there's quite a number of hands. Thank you. Anybody actually ever been in the facility? And where is it?
It's over in the old Montsano Building.
It used to actually be in Graham Hall at one time.
It's in the old Montsano Building.
Now, if you know the Montsano Building or Pfizer Building there on Sycamore Road, that's where it's located. We have speech and hearing in there. We have technology, and we have quite a marvelous facility. Your own mayor has been involved in a bookcase project, which is separate, but it is certainly related to our mission to promote literacy. I'm here tonight to, again, thank you on behalf of our dean, but I would like to just highlight a few of the programs that we offer. The literacy clinic was founded by Jean Grant over sixty years ago, and since that time, it has served students really throughout the region, but primarily DeKalb-Sycamore. But we've had students in our outreach programs in many of the communities west and east and north of DeKalb. In June of this year, we had the second literacy on-the-lawn event. It was held at the NIU Convocation Center. We had approximately three hundred people who attended that event. This was year two. So, hopefully, year three, we'll see it grow even larger and begin rivaling that STEM event that's held in the same facility. Now, why do we exist? If you've been around DeKalb and in the right places of DeKalb, you may have seen some of the little free libraries that the literacy clinic sponsors. Some in University Village, Gideon Court, and a few other places around the community. They're free libraries. Take a book, leave a book. It's been a marvelous opportunity for promoting literacy. That's one big community outreach. A second program we have is called Boys and Books. It's usually held at the literacy clinic there on Sycamore Road, and we have boys who gather with an adult, usually a master student in reading or a degree person, a doctorate, who will discuss books on a regular basis. Another program that we have is called America Reads. Picture undergraduate students at Northern Illinois University, not necessarily education majors, but people who are interested in helping to promote literacy. They come to the clinic, they receive twelve hours of training, and then over the course of a semester... of a semester, they will work one-on-one with students in the clinic. Another program that we have is an assessment program. This program offers diagnostic assessment, that's testing, for students who may be struggling in reading. And that program is conducted at our clinic, but much beyond because we have outreach sites. Those of you that know about the off-campus sites of Northern will do it there, and we'll also do it in a number of public schools in the Chicagoland area. Master's students are involved in that sort of activity. And then for those students who are really struggling in reading, we have an individualized tutoring program. And that tutoring program is a one-on-one, usually for a semester at a time. That'd be maybe 12 to 14 sessions, and a certified reading specialist will provide that instruction. Now, you might say, how does this work? How do we get the money? Well, we have, of course, support from the university, which seems to be less and less all the time. We have a generous program of, and a long history of never, to my knowledge, refusing service to a student who needs it. We have scholarships through the good efforts of donors and the DeKalb County Community Foundation. We have a small endowment that helps fund special sorts of programs. And those programs involve outreaches to Gideon Court, to the University Village, to a variety of places. And we're so pleased to partner with the schools in DeKalb and Sycamore, both public and private, who will make referrals to us for students who need assistance. I've taken a few minutes just to give some quick highlights, and I'd be very happy to respond to any questions or queries that members of the audience or council members may have.
Are there any questions for Jerry at this point? Alderman Norekka?
How many students do you serve each year?
Ah, that's a great question. I don't have the exact numbers here, but I think over this last academic year, and I'm not including the 300 here, because some of those are parents and all, but we usually serve about 400 students a year.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Excellent. I cannot test. It's a great program and an excellent outreach in the effort of promoting literacy among our population. So thank you, Jerry. Alderman Fanuka?
Dr. Johns, what's a typical cost of starting up one of the little local libraries, the free book?
Well, we got, I think we have about six of them in the community. The Daily Chronicle, you know, those old newspaper boxes that you put in your money and pull it down? They still have those, but they got a roomful of them. They donated some of those to us. And then we worked with some local people to get them painted, to get them wrapped, and like, you've seen these cars that have wrappings on them, you know, to promote things. The designs were created by high school students, and we put those in. I don't know the specific costs involved in that. We usually work hard with individuals and volunteers, and I think the mayor would know a little bit because that little book program, he has the bookcase program that he spearheads, that's a lot of volunteer work that goes into that. So we get books through donations. We also have connections with some of the publishers, so we can buy books at a greatly reduced cost, sometimes as little as a dollar. And of course, while I don't know the actual cost, probably the largest cost are then keeping those books supplied, is children will take them and may not return them.
Okay. But if somebody wanted to say to sponsor a location, that they could reach out to the clinic and go from there?
Sure. I would just say it's very, very simple. All you need to do is give a call over to the literacy clinic, that phone number, and it's going to be on a sheet that council members may receive. And if you express an interest, we can certainly work with you. And it's not a case of saying you either got to sponsor the whole thing or nothing. We take donations of books, we take dollars, we take labor to help get these things going.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jerry, the phone number on my flyer is 815-753-1416.
What did I say?
751.
Seven, ah, that's just called a miscue in reading.
Okay.
815-753-1416. Thanks for that correction, John.
Thank you. Any other questions of Dr. Johns? Okay. Thank you very much, Jerry. Moving on to our second proudly DeKalb feature this evening, Play Everywhere DeKalb Grants Submittle by Northern Illinois University Steamworks. I'll call on Patty Sebert, Sebert, for that report.
Good evening, community members and councilmen and women. I, I'm very pleased to be here this evening, and as the instigator of that STEM event, I would be very happy to see the literacy event get to the same size as STEM Fest. We had several of my colleagues help out at the literacy on the lawn this year, and it's a very, it's a wonderful event and wonderful program. Thank you. For us, I'm the direct, Patty Sebert, I'm the director of STEM Outreach at Northern Illinois University. And recently, STEM Outreach has partnered with several of our related units at NIU, including STEM Read, which is how we became involved with the literacy clinic, to be called Steamworks as an overarching label, because we're working in the arts as well in, in terms of STEM. We recently submitted a grant proposal to the Kaboom Foundation for a Play Everywhere Challenge Grant. We've applied for $50,000. We were selected as one of 200 finalists out of 1,200 original submitters. You might wonder, what does STEM Outreach have to do with a play grant? Why would we do this? Well, play is a very important part of the children's, of children's learning processes, and especially when we talk about spatial development, spatial relationships, this is, is critical for future STEM education. It's critical in math, it's critical in engineering. And so we wanted to be involved. We can go to the next slide, please. Who's doing that? Okay. So what we are intending to do, what we were asked to do by Kaboom in our, our submittal, and wow, that's not going to be read anywhere in the room, but we're, we're to design imaginative and unexpected places for people to stumble upon play. And so we are looking at a neighborhood near Northern Illinois University, the North Annie Glidden Corridor, as a primary place to, to start with. We have a couple of installations in mind, a small natural playscape in that area where children can use their imaginations and play. And then also in downtown DeKalb, and I think we can go to the next slide on that one. Well, unexpected play. Thank you for being patient with me. I am not the author of the slides. My colleague Tracy couldn't be here this evening. But if we can get people to play in areas where they might otherwise just be standing around, let's say at a bus stop or stoplight, and we can get a little bit more of a lighthearted community going, just to increase people's joy in being part of this community, that's one thing that we're, we're aiming for. And another thing that we're aiming for with our proposal is to bring the community together. So that we're starting with a area, the neighborhood of North Annie Glidden area, we also have an installation downtown, but we will have little signs and little places all around the city. We're looking at the Pleasant Street neighborhood as well. So we'll be trying to pull a city together. And one way to pull a city together is to have people investigate other neighborhoods or find themselves in places that they wouldn't otherwise be. So as they stumble upon a Play Everywhere, or as our grant submittal is called, Playfully DeKalb, thanking proudly DeKalb for that idea, for name. Oh, thank you, Ellen. And here I felt like I've been here too often lately. I guess I'm still a newbie. All right. No, I lost my train of thought. Thank you. Okay, we're trying to bring the community together. So as they stumble upon a, a Playfully DeKalb plaque or sign or playscape in their own neighborhood, there will be a URL on the sign and a QR code, which will bring them to our website, which will include both a map of all of the locations within the city, but also tie into some of the STEM and STEAM activities that we have onsite that relate back to both what they're, what they were playing with and the neighborhood and just general wonderful things for them to get involved in. Some of the signs will have a Play Right Now tack, which will be a STEM activity to do right then. So in terms of unexpected places, we're looking at the bus stops, and you can see on the slide here, the little log walkway, if we can put a couple of those behind the bus shelters for kids to play on while they're waiting for a bus. We were, are looking at doing some sidewalk painting in terms of follow this line and whether it's zigzag or straight or curvy, just to get them out there and moving. So we're looking at healthy bodies as well as healthy minds. And then the books. So we'll be wanting to chat with the literacy clinic, and we've already spoken with the library, about adding some of the little book boxes to each of our installations. The largest installation fits in with the arts corridor in downtown DeKalb. This is the, we're hoping to put in the empty lot on the corner of First Street and Locust, some musical instruments, outdoor musical instruments, some benches with maybe some chess checker tables along with them. And we're, we'll be looking for city cooperation in that. In the future, we don't have money to do this right now, but in the future, we'd like to add a few things on, on private property as well. In some neighborhoods of the city, there is not really enough public property to add places. So here, this is just an example, so don't go running to the owner of Pleasant Laundry and say, hey, I saw this was going to happen. It's, it's a, an example of what we might be able to do, just to provide a little imaginative play spot for children. So one of the ideas for signage would be to have children at a bus stop teach the people around them how to do a song with the actions involved, like I'm a Little Teapot or Head and Shoulders, Knees and Toes, that sort of thing, to get them moving, to get their parents moving, to initiate a little bit of laughter among the group. Are there any questions?
Patty, the, the grant application will occur the end of this month?
Yes.
So you're in the final hours.
It's, it was a very short turnaround. We were notified the beginning of the month that we were finalist, and the final submission is due the 31st. They'd prefer it on Friday because there will be nobody in their office on the weekend in case something goes wrong. It's an online submission. It's a question of, we don't have to have all of our ducks in a row, but we would like to, we would like to know that the city is on board with this and, and be able to let them know that.
Okay.
We don't have to have all of our permits, we don't have to have full commitment on everything, but we would like to have a letter of like, of intent to say that the city is willing to work with us on this.
Okay. I think we can, do we need council action for that? Emery or Ellen DeVita, our community development director?
We've drafted a letter to be signed for review to go out. We've already had the group come to the enhancement commission meeting as well, and the commission unanimously recommended support. This, it's a neat project, this is just a grant, but I think that the ideas that are coming out of it are, would serve us well regardless of the grant or not. You know, we would need to look for other funding sources, obviously, but it ties everything together with the STEAM initiatives and the arts initiatives that we've been supporting to build sense of place in the community. This originally came through some of the emails we get from HUD, and my thanks to the STEAM Center folks, because I'd passed it on to several in the community, and, and they stepped up to the plate and, and worked together and wrote the grant. Thank you.
We've spoken with, as, as Ellen said, the, the city committees, we've spoken with the, the Arts Council, we did a ride-along with the policemen, lots of, lots of things to, to get community support, and we have a lot more ideas than the $50,000 we'll cover, but you know, there's a future.
Okay.
Thanks to Jim McDougal.
Well, I'm sensing the support you're asking Patty is there, and we will draft the letter with that intent.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Moving on to presentations, DeKalb County Convention and Visitor Bureau Annual Report, I'll call on Executive Director Debbie Armstrong.
Good evening, Mayor Ray, city council, staff and community members. My name is Debbie Armstrong, and I'm the executive director of your convention and visitor bureau for DeKalb County. I've given everybody, all the council, all the councilmen and woman, I have given you a packet for you to take a look at, and I do have a presentation. I'm going to have to say that if I stumble a bit, please forgive me, I'm still visually challenged right now from a, a recent operation that I had on an eye. So forgive me if I have a little challenge there as we go through here. But what I wanted to, to point out in this packet that I gave you, is you have our mission statement, you have our 10-year tourism statistics, and if you take that out, I just want to pull this out so everybody can hear this, that visitor spending in DeKalb County, the revenue generated from it in 2014 was $88.39 million. And you can see that we've been up, and we're going on six years in a row. I do not have the 2015 figures. I should have them probably at the end of this month from the state of Illinois, excuse me, so I can get back to you on that. But that's why, that's as recent as I have at this point in time. You have our visitor's guide, you have our current, our new FY17 board members and our officers. You have examples of rat cards and one of our new ones, which is our spirits brochure, that in the first six months, we, we distributed 20,000 of these, therefore, we had to do another run. So we're on our second 20,000 of these. That's a very strong niche for us in tourism right now. And the other thing I want to show you, and you're the first ones to know this, so breaking news, everybody, this is, the, the Illinois Office of Tourism has a visitor's guide, and they used to put it out once a year. So this was this first year that they tried to do it, they tried to do it two different times. So this is the one that I received today, and we, of course, try to get the director of tourism out here, Cory Jobe, and lobby for our area, and a lot of times, it's really the bigger areas that are able to get there. And a lot of times, it's really the bigger areas that are able to get there. I would like you to turn to page 18 and see this lovely spread on Whiskey Acres. So we're pretty pumped about that, and everybody should be here, too. And so if you look, it goes on to the next page through 20. Now, that's not paid advertising. That's your CVB working and Whiskey Acres working to try to lobby to get this covered. So we're pretty excited about that and really looking forward to distributing these everywhere. So I will, first of all, thank you for your support. I know that this has already been voted on through 16.5, our financial support from you, but I want to thank you for that. I had to go a little later this year due to this eye issue. So I'm not sure, Jason or Ellen, I may have to have help help. I'm not sure about this. So I'm going to try to start. I've got my clicker. So are we set up to start here? It's not moving forward. No, no, you do. You got it two weeks ago. It was delivered here, and Jason got it, and he acknowledged that he got it. So that's okay. I can do this freehand, okay? Not a problem, not a problem. Anyway, so let me, let me move along here. So this may not, I don't have pretty pictures for you, so I'll just, I'll just talk a little bit here for you. Basically, I wanted to, we have a number of financial partners in our service area, and of course, the city of DeKalb is one. We have the city of DeKalb, we have the county board, we have two different entities at NIU, we have the city of Sycamore, we have John Mac Orchard, we have the village of Kingston, we have the village of Malta, we have Shabana, and we have Cortland that are currently stakeholders, along with the Illinois Office of Tourism. And it's not really them, it's the portion of the tax for the hotels that we're entitled to, based on the formula that they have at the state. So that's how we're funded. And then we have a lot of in-kind people and event sponsors, because I think most of you know we do DeKalb Kite Fest. So our mission statement is really to generate economic impact and to promote DeKalb County as a premier destination for leisure and business travel. Just wanted to remind everybody that we did have the second IHSA State Football Championships here, and we, the numbers were down this year. It was really, really cold, but we had a very good time, and everything went well. So the economic impact, or the, excuse me, the estimated economic impact for that is about $800,000 for that one weekend. We had about 20, 25,000 to 26,000 people this time around. We had 30 our first time out, and we have it every two years through 2021. The big difference is, we had publicity that came from that, and this is publicity that we did not pay for. It's because that we were smart enough to go after this business with Northern Illinois University and the community is a partner. And basically, this time, last time, with the first time out, we got $200,000 worth of ad equivalency PR. This time, it was 2.5 million. So return events are very, very powerful, and they're something that keeps on giving in the community. It'll be back again, so if you want to volunteer, it's November 24th through the 25th in 2017. So basically, I've already told you what the numbers were, $88.39 million. And it's up six years in a row, 6.14 million in state tax receipts, 1.38 million in local, and 530 jobs attributed here in DeKalb County. The hotel sales tax, excuse me, the hotel sales tax for this year, I have combined Sycamore and DeKalb from what I have, and the DeKalb tax right now, I'm just going to go over DeKalb at this point, is we're at $291,000 and some change. It's about 7,000 down from last year. The reason for that is because our people that are working on the railroad came later this year. So you'll see some of those numbers get made up later. They usually come in the spring. And I guess, since we don't have the pictures to look at, I'll just kind of give you an idea of the results of our social media campaign that we have to promote for this area. We've got 557,000 views of our ads that we've promoted, and about 17,000 click-throughs for that, at a cost of about 20 cents per click. So that's pretty phenomenal. I just want to mention that Kite Fest is September 11th, 2016 this year. And that our municipal match funding for last year, this is for the previous fiscal year, was 81.5, and our grant was $77,000. That's the grant, that's the portion of the hotel sales tax that we're entitled to. So basically, that's about it, I think, without the pictures that we've got. But I think that gives you the information that you really need about the visitor bureau. And I would like to ask any of you who are available, tomorrow morning at Feranda's at 8:30 is the Downtown DeKalb Merchant Meeting that is run by the city of DeKalb. We're having one of the, Patty's not here. We're having a new group come in. It's the World Robotic Olympiads, and they're going to be giving a demonstration as to what they're going to do. There's a competition that is going to be at the Convocation Center for the first time, September 3rd through the 4th. So I'd like to invite any of you to come and see. We're going to have two, a 10 and 12-year-old, I think, doing a robotic demonstration for us. So if anybody can come, please do. We'd love to have you. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Debbie? Seeing none, I'll thank you for the report, Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, we have three yards of distinction recognitions to make this evening. These are yards that are nominated through the Enhancement Commission. And this evening, I'd like to recognize, first of all, Chuck and Diane Johnson. Do they happen to be present? I don't think I have any of these confirmed RSVPs. Their residence is at 305 East Sunset Place, and we are recognizing them for their dedication to neighborhood beautification. And you can see on the city website, in the backup material, pictures of these yards. The second yards of distinction award is to Dr. Yumesh Gasswami at 138 Larking Avenue in DeKalb, again for neighborhood beautification. And the third recognition is for Ryan and Carissa Folsky, 531 Joanne Lane. So I'd like to congratulate all.
John, the Folskys are here.
Come forward. Sorry. And again, the pictures of these properties are on the backup material. But congratulations.
One more. Get the official camera now.
I will turn to City Manager Emery Goroff for a personnel introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure and privilege to introduce Chris Randall, our new Human Resources Director, who's standing to my right. I'd like to give you a little background on Chris. So she comes for us from the Algonquin Lake and the Hills Fire Protection District and started for working for the city of DeKalb June 20th. Chris's experience comprises all facets of human resources, including administration of employee benefits and workers' compensation, payroll, risk management, recruitment and retention, classification and compensation, performance evaluation management, training and development, labor relations, and Human Resources Information Systems Administration. So full-rounded scope relating to HR. Chris previously worked for the Village Hanover Park as her Human Resources Generalist, as well as for the city of Lawrence, Kansas, home to the University of Kansas. And for those fellow MPA grads out there, Kansas is like our tribal, so, but we still like Chris, and Chris is from a university town, so. Chris earned her bachelor's degree with distinctions in Justice Studies with emphasis in Human Resources Management from Fort Hays University in Kansas, and is currently pursuing her master's degree in Public Administration. Chris is also a Certified Professional in Human Resources by the Human Resources Certification Institute, as well as a Certified Professional by the Society of Human Resources Management. The other thing that is very unique and very beneficial for us here at the city is Chris is trilingual. So not only is she fluent in English, but she's also fluent in Spanish and Portuguese. So I would like to introduce Chris to the mayor, the council, and the community, and if you'd all help me in welcoming Chris. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction, Emery. Moving next to public participation, is anyone wishing to address the council on items not specific on the agenda? I've got you, Dan, under G1. We'll get to it as soon as we get through consent. You need to speak up, Steve. Sure. Moving on, then, we have our consent agenda. Before us, the consent agenda has approval of council minutes of June 27, and the committee of the whole, as well as the regular council meeting. We have accounts payable and payroll through July 25th in the amount of $2,996,068.58 investment and bank balance summary through June, the year-to-date revenues and expenditures for general fund and water fund through June, human service funding, fourth quarter and annual report, and a resolution authorizing a body art establishment license to Out on a Wind located at 127 East Lincoln Highway. Does any council member want any item removed from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda contents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Baker, second. Roll call.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the items as contained in the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Roll call, please.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2016-20, amending Chapter 9, Establishment of Fees, Section 9.04, Ambulance Service Fees. And this ordinance is before us in second reading this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Noriko, seconded by Alderman Finukin. I'll turn to Eric Hicks.
Welcome staff, mayor, and council. Up for your consideration tonight on second reading is a proposed raise in our ambulance billing fees. This increase has been vetted previously at the Finance Committee meetings and at the previous council meeting. The proposed increase fee is across the board, with increases ranging from $112 to $294 per call. We'll continue the soft billing practice, which I'll explain here in a minute. This increase will net the city about $156,711 in new revenue. So we've had some questions about the soft billing, so I'm going to kind of go over that real quick. Basically, for patients with soft, for soft billing, what we're going to do, for patients who do not have insurance, we're going to bill them for 120 days, so they'll get three bills. At the end of that three bills, so they'll get three consecutive notices, our billing company will do multiple website searches to make sure they do not have any insurance. And if they do not have any insurance, after the research is done, that bill will be written off. So there will be no charge to those people that cannot afford this. So I'm here to answer any questions for you tonight.
Any questions of Chief Hicks? I don't see questions from council. We have Dwayne Brown registered to speak. Dwayne?
Yes, Dwayne Brown, Fourth Ward. I had three topics I briefly wanted to speak on. The first is the ambulance carry rates. Once again, we're going to have the least affordable people bill for services that they can't afford. And I thought it ironic, this study comes out of Naperville, and it's 100 communities. Naperville has an annual, they have detached homes which sell for $400 and $12,000. And the annual income per couple is $105,000. And we have a 40% poverty rate in DeKalb. And, you know, it's ironic, it comes from there. I realize it's 100 communities, but we can't be compared to some of these communities because they have higher median incomes and we're lower. I thought it interesting, at the first reading, one of the aldermen, and I want to quote him, I wrote it down, he made the comment, "I don't want to take somebody that can't afford it and add to their burden." Well, you were 100% right on your comment. You were 100% wrong on your vote. You voted against it. I don't understand that. That's a gut punch there. I hope this time, you vote the proper way. And we don't need this at this time. This can always be brought up at a later time. The second thing is gaming devices. The city of DeKalb, they can't leave well enough alone. They have to have regulation, red tape, and bureaucracy. This is part of the reason we have empty storefronts in DeKalb, that and the high property tax. Business people don't like that. Let the free market determine how many facilities there are in the city and how many units operate. That will sort itself out. Leave, go with a hands-off approach here. Just leave that alone. I know you're bound and determined to raise the rates on per machine, and that seems to be going through, but don't have a regulation on the number of facilities. We're going to lose businesses over that, potential businesses. Third is the proposed.
At this point, you've registered to speak on G1, the ambulance fees.
Yeah.
And that's what I've opened the floor to.
Okay, well, I had one more topic on the, briefly on the bike path, because I.
The bike path, we'll get to, and I'll be glad to call on you at that time.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on ordinance 2016-20, the ambulance service fees. Is there a discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for the roll call, please.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Ordinance 2016-21, amending Chapter 38, Intoxicating Liquors, Section 38.27, Gaming Devices. And this is before us at second reading. I'll turn to City Attorney Frieders to introduce this.
Yes, this is up on second reading this evening.
Yes, this is up on second reading this evening. This is the proposal to alter the fees applicable to video gaming terminals within the city of DeKalb. The proposal would be $500 per machine on initial application and $250 for the annual renewals. The proposal is as it was drafted for the city council when it previously came before you. There have not been any changes or amendments to date.
I'll turn to, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finukin. Dan Gallagher wishes to speak.
Hi, I'm Dan Gallagher, the commander of the American Legion. I apologize for coming up earlier.
That's okay.
First, I thank all of you for serving. It's a lot of time, I'm sure it's 24/7. I applaud you guys. It's, you do a lot. I'm the commander here at the American Legion. We have video poker machines. We have four of them. Each establishment can have five. We only have four. If you raise this fee on us, it's gonna hurt us bad. We're a non-for-profit organization. Everything that we earn, we give back to the community. We give scholarships, monetary scholarships to the great schools, St. Mary's, Clinton Rosette, Huntley. I go there at the eighth grade graduation, I hand a boy and a girl each a nice little monetary gift. Then I go to the high school, another again. We talk to the counselors and the teachers, they pick out a boy and a girl, we give them a monetary check. We also get approached by all the youth sports programs here in town, baseball, soccer. We even help sponsor the barbed wire Betties, it's a ladies roller derby team. We also send children, boys and girls, down to this Illinois Boys and States Program. The state police has a youth program that we send children to. We also purchase honor guard uniforms for the many military funerals that we do. We're doing two this week. We also help veterans in distress that are financially being hurt. The big one, though, that costs the most money, is on Memorial Weekend, we've purchased over 2,000 flags for the veterans for every cemetery in town. We put an American flag on all their graves. The Boy Scouts help us do this. It takes a couple hours, it used to take us eight hours to do. The cost is very high. It's over two grand. Then also, what we do is we hand out little parade flags to all the children on Memorial Day on the parade. If you raise this, we're gonna have to make some cuts. And it's not gonna be to the veterans, it's gonna be to handing out little flags to little kids. So, please, if you could exclude us from this, we're not a business that's open at 7:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the morning. We're open 3:00 in the afternoon, and we might stay open until 9:00 if we got four people. I bet tonight we'll have a full house of six people watching the Cubs and Sox game, which I'll be going to momentarily. Please keep us at the $25 per machine, not 250. I wrote all of you an email. I'm very proud of our alderman, Alderman Snow. He acknowledged us. He sees where we're coming from. Alderman Favor, he actually came to our meeting, and we didn't crush him or anything. I applaud you for coming and listening to us. But the rest of you, I hope you see it our way. I really do. We do a lot for the community, and we still want to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, are there questions or discussion from council?
Mayor, we did receive some inquiries from members of the council regarding the impact that this would have. If the council was to have a separate fee structure or keep the existing fee structure for not-for-profits or charitable organizations, there are four licensed in the community right now. The Columbus Club, the American Legion, the Moose Lodge, and the Alx Lodge. They collectively have 14 machines. So, 14 machines at 25 per machine would be $350. 14 machines at 250 per machine would be $3,500. So, it's about a $3150 difference in revenue to the city. The city's projected revenue for the year would change from 17,775 down to 14,625. So, again, there are four establishments operating a total of 14 video gaming terminals within the city right now that would fit within a not-for-profit charitable tax-exempt designation.
And it appears that those four establishments, the business owner's share of the activity from those machines, and I'm doing this just eyeballing the numbers here, are $110,000, $120,000?
For calendar year 2015, which is the most recent calendar year report in the backup, it ranges from about $20,500 up to $49,000 per establishment.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Baker?
Couple of questions. And we brought it up, I think, when we were concerned, what is the asset or litmus test for charitable organization that, and where do we draw the line? I was lobbied, as I imagine everyone was lobbied, specifically for the gentleman that just spoke. Well, the others didn't come forward, and they may not be worried about it. Can we pick out one, as certain taxes have been done in the past, and say, okay, listen, you're giving us $1,000, you were giving us $100, we choose to add you into our list of human resource money and give you 900, and direct it towards flags to be given out at the parades for kids? Can we pick one out and just do that and let the others come to us and see if they can weigh on our sympathy the same, or whether it'll even bother?
So, the funds that you receive from this are general fund dollars. And if the council at some point in time wishes to consider the allocation of those dollars, that is within the council's policy direction. I think in terms of your earlier question about a litmus test, if the council was looking for a bright line rule to establish, if you were considering a change in licensure, what we would recommend would be that they be registered with the state as a charitable organization, be organized as a not-for-profit, and have a tax exemption from the IRS. And that is about as objective of a rule as there could be. Applying, so when I said earlier, there are four establishments that would qualify as not-for-profits, that was the litmus test that we as staff devised and applied to our current licensure. And they split very neatly between the for-profit entities and the clubs that are not-for-profit.
I'm concerned about the range of income from $20,500 to $49. Are we to assume that, and the gentleman's in the back there, that your gross income is the $20,500 and maybe the others are higher?
I'm speaking as the only veteran organization in this town that has machines. We're the only ones. Even also, when you look at that chart-
Dan, could you come to the podium, please?
Yeah, that way everyone can hear.
And as he steps up, the revenue from the Legion for, again, for 2015-
Right. It's not much.
Was $30,531.40 as the local share.
Right. Without these machines, honestly, we'd be closed in having our meetings in the library. I thank you for bringing that up about where's the other organizations. I'm not speaking for them. This is just what we do, the veterans here in the community. We're a membership. In order to come into our club, we prefer you be a veteran. We're open arms to veterans, but we also have social members. We have sons of the American Legion members, we have auxiliary members, too. We have 170 members, all right? I'd say 15 of them probably have Alzheimer's and they're over 90 years of age. They don't come in. Another 30 live outside the state. Another 50, they don't come in. Honestly, probably about 12, 15 of us. But mainly, we just do military funerals. That's it. This money that we receive from the machines, we pay the liquor tax, $1,800. That's a lot of money. But we also employ two NIU veterans for bartenders. So, we try to give back, 'cause we know that the younger ones, there's 600 veterans going to school at NIU. I know I'm getting off topic, I apologize. But I'm trying to bring the younger veterans into the organization. These machines help us. Are you gonna kill us if you raise it on us? No, but we are gonna make cuts, like you guys make cuts. And I applaud you. You have drastic things you have to do. But we're not a business open at 7:00 in the morning until 2:00 in the morning. That's the ones that are counting. You can see how much money some of these places make. That's why more people are buying these things and opening up shops. That's all across state.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that was what I was looking for, and I guess I'm lobbying for making an exception indirectly with those funds and donating them back, but you're marketing them. And that we, as a council, go ahead and deal with the others if they come forward and even ask.
So, Dave, you're suggesting leave the ordinance as the fees are defined, as the increased fees are defined, and let the American Legion come forward and apply for social service funding?
Absolutely.
Okay. Other discussion? Alderman Snow?
Yeah, this is a difficult choice. I think it's very hard, though, to single out one establishment and say, this business is exempt from the tax. I'm not even sure that would be legal. But I am sympathetic to the charitable giving that the group does, and that's what I mentioned last meeting. You know, just the non-for-profit status, to me, may not be sufficient, but charitable giving is something. And I think one solution, and I will put this in the form of a motion, to amend the main motion, to exempt 501(c)(3) charitable organizations. I realize that may not immediately solve your problem, but a lot of those things that I think the American Legion mentioned would be eligible for charitable giving if you had a 501(c)(3) component to your organization. And I realize there's some legwork involved in establishing that, but I think to the extent that those monies are used for charitable purpose, that would be one way to exempt machines that are operated, owned, or managed and operated by a charitable organization.
Other discussion? Alderman Baker?
Can we hear from the city attorney, 'cause that was-
I'm sorry.
Can we hear from the city attorney first?
That would be a motion, an amended motion, if somebody wants a second.
I apologize. Is there a second to the amendment?
I think we need to understand it better from the city attorney first, if we can, 'cause I, you said I'm not even sure if it would be legal.
I'm having ear issues.
I would like to hear from the city attorney, because you made a comment in the middle of your motion, you were not even sure it would be legal to single one out.
Well, I don't think you can name a business saying, "American Legion is exempt." I think that favors an individual establishment, and it might be illegal to do it. But you can set categories.
Yes. So, to address both of the proposals that have been put on the table, from a practice perspective, if the council is to go the direction that Alderman Baker has suggested, then it would seem as though you had passed the ordinance tonight and have agencies do some sort of application for funds, as we do with other human service funding. From a practical perspective, and just having an opportunity to speak briefly with the city manager, I think our staff recommendation honestly would be, if you're looking at creating a separate class, just create it with the license fees instead of having them pay it in and have it be partially refunded. In terms of creating that distinction, the American Legion, they do qualify as a tax-exempt organization. There are different types of 501(c) organizations, (c)(3) and (c)(6), and different entities. So, again, we feel the best litmus test is that they are, they have a tax-exempt designation from the IRS, which would cover that tax-exempt status, that they are a not-for-profit, and that they are registered with the state of Illinois as a charitable organization. So, there is a state registration through the attorney general's office for any charitable organization, and those three factors combined together are about as good of a litmus test as you can have, to use Alderman Baker's terminology, to really distinguish between the entities. As we apply that to the licensees, it draws a very clear distinction between an organization such as the American Legion and the more for-profit venues in the city. There is no question that having a distinction in license fees of that nature would be enforceable or lawful, and the city has other fees that we currently either waive or reduce for certain types of charitable organizations. So, we would have no concerns about there being enforceable, but we would recommend it be that test to determine and classify users.
I would amend my motion to echo your criteria.
So, it would be identification as a tax-exempt entity by the Internal Revenue Service, organized as a not-for-profit, and registered with the state of Illinois as a charitable organization.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So, Bob has placed an amendment to the main motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion?
Clarification on the amendment, without naming a dollar amount in that amendment, we don't, what are we amending it to? Are we amending it-
They would remain. They would remain.
At $25 and $25.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Okay. Alderman Baker?
I still come back to, if, and I understand that their income is very low, and that's why the increase is such a high impact compared to maybe the other charitable organizations. And that's why, I guess, I'm concerned with the others. They're not here. If anybody here has been lobbied by even one of the other three, I'd like to hear about it now, 'cause I don't think we have. And maybe they just aren't, they're making so much extra off of this, they're not concerned with it. And we do have human services that we do fund, so this indirectly will help us in our general fund for that as well. So, I guess I'm just throwing out there, maybe we could have a, if we make $25 for VFW, is that the formal?
American Legion.
American Legion, I'm sorry. If we make their income level of $25 and then have a graduated fee schedule for other charitable organizations that may figure out a way to make much more money, maybe I'm the only one thinking that way. That's why I'm throwing it out.
So, if the council wants to, again, trying to find an objective distinction that you could utilize, if your concern is the nature of the activities that the organization engages in, veterans organizations such as the American Legion qualify, they're not a 501(c)(3), they're a 501(c)(19), and they are recognized as veterans organizations by the Internal Revenue Service. So, it's an objective test that's established by a superior governmental agency, and they qualify or they don't. But a fraternal veterans organization, American Legion, VFW, those types of organizations can qualify under that standard. So, if you wanna narrow the focus, that could be what the council considers.
Alderman Snow?
I'm comfortable with exempting charitable organizations, because that money goes back into the community, whether we give it directly or rebate, or they give it directly. I think it's money that goes back to help the community. If they are not a charitable organization, then I'm not really interested in reducing their fee.
What if a charitable organization that doesn't put money back into our community then comes forward?
Pretty much, I think the motion, as I've given it, covers all those charitable organizations. If they are a true charitable organization, they're gonna qualify under that criteria.
Does that criteria have to include that they provide money to our community, not maybe just to a national treasure chest, so to speak? And I don't have in mind right now, but I'm worried about the future. Sometimes we create things without, and there's unintended consequences. I'm just trying to narrow it down that this is just for DeKalb.
I don't believe the criteria, as Alderman Snow has defined it, necessarily requires it to come back to this community.
That's correct. The registration and identification as tax-exempt require that the proceeds be used. You know, the funds they raise are tax-exempt because they're using those funds for charitable purposes, but it could be on a broad scale, it could be on a very local scale. But again, at present, it would just be the four establishments that we've identified.
Alderman Favor, did you have a comment?
I did. The only, what I was going to really just comment on is, you know, what Mr. Brown had spoke about, is not putting a limit on the number of machines. And one of the things that I felt I saw when I went to the American Legion is that when we, as a city, opened up to dedicated gambling establishments, that's when it started to impact their organization. And as more and more machines come online, there's only so many people that are gonna gamble. It's not like an additional people are gonna go and start gambling in DeKalb. So, there's a limited number of dollars, and in my mind, you know, as more and more machines come into the city of DeKalb, the American Legion is gonna suffer the existing bars that, when the original ordinance was passed, to support additional bars, or the existing bars that were needing additional income. As these additional machines come online, they're gonna hurt the existing businesses. But that's the decision that we have to make. That's what we're wrestling with, and it's not an easy decision to, you know, to go through and think about this. And that was just a comment, it's not anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Finukin?
Well, I think I'd be in favor of having a lowered rate for the not-for-profit charitable organizations and the criteria-
and the criteria as described by Attorney Frieders. I'm wondering, though, that instead of leaving it at $25, $25, as it exists, that maybe we make the original application fee a bit higher and leave the renewal at $25, so that the existing machines at those four charitable organizations aren't impacted. But that if any new machines were added, either by them or another charitable organization wishing to come in, they would face a bit of an increased cost in that additional machine coming into town, rather than just leaving it at $25, $25. So, if Bob would accept it, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to have the initial application for a machine of a charitable organization as defined by Attorney Frieders, for the initial application to be $100, but to leave the renewal fee at $25.
I would accept that as part of my motion, if the second one accepted.
Alderman Baker?
Question. The for-profit machines, what are their fees?
$250.
As proposed, it would be $500 for initial application, $250 for renewal.
Why make it only 100? Make it 500. Let's just call it a day. We're already talking about limiting all the machines anyway. I mean, I don't know if that's what we're going to, but it's certainly being thrown out there.
So, Dave, you're suggesting leave the application fee at what?
At 500.
At 500?
500.
Yeah. I'd say leave the application fees alone, but if we're going to go 25, leave it at 25. I mean, I'm just concerned about that charitable organization that is going to run all that money into another state somewhere, but reach out nationally.
I guess I have no objection to that. You know, we're protecting the existing machines, which is what I want to do. So...
So, your amendment would alter...
So, I guess I'm going to change it to 500 would be my motion.
So, if I can...
The application fee would remain at 500, but the renewal would be 25 for the category that we've...
If I could make a suggestion for the transparency of the public and the sleep of our city clerk over the next couple of meetings, if the motion on the floor could be withdrawn, and we could restate the motion, as I think you have proposed it, if that would be acceptable, I'd be happy to restate it if the motion...
Yeah, I think...
Do you want to withdraw?
Yes.
Okay. And Dave?
Yes.
So, it sounds like the motion on the floor was that the application fee for new machines would be $500 per machine, regardless of the status of the applicant. The renewal fee for for-profit ventures, or for any non-qualified ventures, would be $250 per machine per year. And for entities that are recognized by the IRS as being tax-exempt, that are organized as a not-for-profit, and that are registered with the state as a charitable organization, it would be $25 per machine per year for license renewals.
That sounds like the motion that I want to make, yes.
Okay.
I make that motion.
And I'll second.
Bob has moved. Alderman Fanouken has seconded. Is there further discussion? Alderman Baker?
When, now, if we've opened the floodgates to something that is unintended, and all of a sudden, there's a bunch of applications that come in. This is directed to Attorney Frieders.
I missed your question.
We, as a council, if we created something that was unintended, and all of a sudden, there's 25 applications at the next meeting, we still could turn all 25 down and say, "We've reached our limit."
Yeah. So, the, provided that the city council makes decisions on licensure in a fashion that isn't based on any unlawful criteria, if you at some point in time seek to impose a limit, you can impose a limit. If you seek to not approve licenses based on some determination by the council that it's in the interests of public health, welfare, safety, or morals, then that's the determination that you make.
So, even if there are additional licenses pending that are coming forward to us for final approval, we can still say, "Hey, we changed our mind. We're not going to allow any more." We still have that option, for the reasons you've just stated.
Right. Provided that there's a legitimate nondiscriminatory basis for that, yes. And as it relates to charitable organizations, the class of license that they're going to fit in is already a relatively narrow class. So, they not only have to have a video gaming license, they also have to have a liquor license within a class that's permitted under city code.
Attorney Frieders, the ordinance, as we have awarded before us, does not deal with numbers of establishments, nor numbers within a single shopping center?
It does not have any limits of that type. That's correct.
Okay. So, Alderman Favor, I think that speaks to your issue, that the current wording of the ordinance does not deal with any limitation in numbers.
Based on, Mayor, if I could jump in, based on the previous committee of the whole discussion, staff is continuing to explore additional information, or provide additional information based on that presentation, which deals with the issue of number of applicants per, let's say, in a strip center. So, this item will still be coming back to you at some other point regarding future licenses, whether you want to place any restrictions on those at all.
Okay. So, there could be further revision to this ordinance?
There could be. I mean, staff has continued to research based on the direction that the council gave at the committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. Alderman Baker?
Can I make a comment on that same category right now? Is that within what we're able to talk about, Attorney Frieders? Can I follow up on what the city manager just mentioned?
For discussion purposes, absolutely.
After the committee of the whole meeting, I bet I had a dozen different people jump me with their personal opinions. But at least half were concerned about granting two licenses that are obviously going to be so close to each other that either they'll both be very weak, or one might not make it. And then, the other half were saying, "Let the market prevail, and let another 50 people try." But I don't like to set up failure. So, I'm torn on that. I hope everybody gives that a lot of serious thought.
All right. We have before us a motion to amend the original motion. And that is to have the application fee at $500, and to reduce the annual renewal for charitable organizations as have been defined. Leave those at $25. Is that clear? Further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call then on the amendment.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
This is on the amendment?
Amendment, just the amendment.
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Which brings us back to the original motion to approve the ordinance as amended. Is, we have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion?
Yes. Motion by Noriko, second by Fanouken.
Thank you. Roll call?
Markort?
No.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Moving next to ordinance 2016-23, adopting comprehensive updates to Chapter 50, Citizen Environmental Commission. And this is before us in first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Fanouken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. I'll turn to Director Holden.
Thank you, Mayor. Recall that on June 27th, the chairman of the Citizens Environmental Commission presented a detailed rationale for adopting changes to Chapter 50, referring to the Citizens Environmental Commission. The memorandum that you have has that rationale on it, as well as the red-line version of the current Chapter 50. I will say that, as a result of the discussions on June 27th, we made two changes. One is that citizens will be plural, with an apostrophe after the S. And the meeting frequency will be at least once per month, as opposed to not less than once a month. But those are the two changes that city council recommended, and those are incorporated in the version that you have.
Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2016-87, authorizing the purchase and equipping of two police vehicles through the state bid process in an amount not to exceed $82,538. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markort. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. I'll turn to Chief Lowry.
Good evening, city council, city staff, and our community. I'm here tonight requesting the authorization for the purchase of equipping two vehicles, the purchase and equipping of two vehicles through the Illinois state bid process in an amount not to exceed that which was authorized in the FY 16.5 budget of $82,538, under the title of Resolution 2016-087. A brief bit of background, we have three vehicles we're going to decommission. Of those vehicles, all three are over 100,000 miles. And I'll give you just a quick breakdown on those. One is a 2006 Ford Crown Victoria at 141,000. That vehicle is in a support role in training, and is no longer in service at all. We are taking parts off it to keep other Crown Victorias running. So, that vehicle will be scrapped. There's been an attempt to sell that at auction, and it has failed. We have a 2006 Crown, another 2006 Crown Victoria with 151,398 miles. That vehicle's been in a support role in the admin division. It will be sold at auction or scrapped. It has no trade-in value. The third vehicle is a 2005 Crown Victoria with 151,670 miles. It is, it has been in a support capacity. None of these vehicles being decommissioned were, are currently in frontline operations. They had been moved down from frontline operations because of some issues with the vehicles, maintenance-wise and age-wise. This vehicle is no longer suitable for service either. So, all three are going to be decommissioned and no longer in service with the city at all. Again, it will be sold at auction or scrapped. Over the lives of these three vehicles, the city has spent $87,672 to keep them in service. That's the total for all three. The breakdown by each vehicle is providing the backup. The process in which we use to utilize our vehicles is, due to economic considerations, we have used our vehicles well beyond their normal life existence, based on best police practices. Trade-ins usually occur in most police agencies between three and five years. We usually run the vehicles till they're no longer operable. As you can see, '05 and '06 are pretty long stretches of time. None of these vehicles are suitable for first-line response. None of them are safe for police officers. None of them are safe for the community. The process by which we seek out these vehicles and make the appropriate inquiries to make the purchase is through the Illinois, the state of Illinois central management system bid process. That's where the state of Illinois solicits the whole bid process, from RFP throughout the process, and gets providers within the state to provide vehicles at a specific cost. So, these vehicles would supply agencies from the state police, regional sheriff's offices, and municipalities across the state. In regard to parties that we've contacted, we've solicited the purchase of these two vehicles through Landmark Ford. But we've also made contact with our local Ford dealer, who has pledged to provide not only service as needed, including warranty work, but to take a look at providing vehicles that would match the state bid in the future, which would also provide them with an opportunity to compete as well on a local level. Currently, the financial impact of this has been described in detail at previous meetings, and is also broken out in the FY 2016.5 budget, which has been approved. Presently, the delay in getting this purchase order in has created about, a little over, approximately $2,000 increase in the cost of both vehicles as we can no longer get 2016 vehicles. We have to get 2017 vehicles. 2016s are no longer available. Having said that, we would respectfully request you authorize a purchase in order to purchase these two vehicles and obtain them within a delivery date of 90 days.
Thank you, Chief. Discussion? Alderman Noriko?
Chief, is this $82,538 figure, was that the budgeted amount, or under the budgeted amount?
That's the budgeted amount. And with cost, in regard to the timeframe which we put the original specifications in to when we're coming in in 2017, we did see some rises in costs. So, we'll have to just adjust our equipping, outfitting those vehicles by utilizing some of our used components to trade from one vehicle to another, which I feel confident in. But that isn't always going to be the answer.
Okay. But this is within the budgeted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Resolution 2016-88, authorizing an agreement extension with Clean USA for the custodial services in an amount not to exceed $88,194.32. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. I'll turn to Director Holden.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council. We are seeking authorization of the agreement, extension for Clean USA for custodial services in an amount not to exceed $88,194.32. Clean USA currently performs the custodial services at the police department, city hall, public works, water and street operations, and the airport. They are a local company out of Sycamore. They use primarily local labor. Clean USA was awarded this contract in September of 2014 through the competitive bidding process. They have excellent service. They have been providing excellent service to us. They're very responsive, and they've agreed to hold the price the same for another year. This would be the third year that we'll have them as custodial services. They have one more year after this one that would be available if we chose to. One of the factors that we are considering is the security associated with getting a new vendor in. Because they go to the police department, they have, potentially have access to sensitive information. And we've learned from current processes that some of the custodial services have difficulties in getting the proper clearance. This company already has that clearance. And so, you know, continuing to use them would avoid the difficulties that we encountered before in going through all the background checks that created a lot of time for staff to follow up on those things. We have budgeted $45,000 for fiscal year 2016 and a half, and do respectfully request authorization to extend this contract.
Discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow? Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 2016-89 authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and HD Supply Company in an amount not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars. Is there a motion? So moved. Moved by Alderman Snow. Is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Favor seconded. I'll turn to Brian Favor.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters. We expect to spend up to seventy-five thousand dollars, so we have a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. This would be spent between primarily two companies, the Badger Meter Company and HD Water Supply, which is a distributor of census meters. The amount that we're requesting, if, if we did not spend that amount, which in the past, this item has come to council each year, in the past, if we did not spend that amount, that would be maintained in the water fund budget. The reason why we request this upfront is we do not purchase water meters all at one time. They're purchased on an as-needed basis and so we're requesting that amount at this, at this time. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Other questions for Brian? Or discussion? Hearing Alderman Marquardt.
Is this just to replace meters as they break, as they go out, or is this, like I have a really old one probably in my house?
Yeah.
Or is it on a schedule type thing?
It is typically on a schedule of fifteen to twenty years we replace water meters. The battery life on the radio transmitters normally lasts about fifteen to twenty years. At that time, the battery will go dead and no longer transmitting the signal, so we'll no longer be able to read the, the water meter. Now, the water meter within your home would still continue to register water use, but until such time as we could actually physically get into the home to change out that water meter, we would have to estimate water bill. So typically, they're on a fifteen, twenty-year cycle. We have eleven thousand water meters. Divide that out over fifteen to twenty years, we're replacing anywhere from five hundred to a thousand water meters every year. And so usually, we're, we're spending about a hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars per year to replace water meters.
Alderman Snow.
On the meters you swap out, is there a market to rebuild those or to, or are they pretty much junk?
No, they're scrapped. At, at one point in time, they used to be rebuilt, but cost analysis has shown that it's actually cheaper to, to purchase the water meters than it is to rebuild them. Some of the new technology, the newer water meters, there's really no way to rebuild them. They're, they're no longer mechanical meters. They're ultrasonic meters or, or mag meters. But no, typically, they're, they're not rebuilt. They're, they're actually scrapped.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 2016-90 authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds for the acquisition of land for the construction of the Kishawaki Kiwanis Bike Path Construction Project in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. I'll turn to City Engineer Leskowski.
Tonight, I'm here to talk about the Kishawaki Kiwanis Bicycle Path. This path is the path that connects Prairie Park off of Annie Litten Road to the lagoon over at, at Northern Illinois University. So on the exhibit to my far left, the yellow polka dots represent the proposed location of the path. It's coming through Prairie Park, heading east, and then it jogs north up to, up to the, the train tracks. And bisecting in the middle of that exhibit is the UP Railroad Tracks. The path would go under those railroad tracks. There'd be a structure over the bike path preventing the ballast from rolling, rolling off the embankment onto bicyclists that might be traveling on the path. And then it continues under the trestle, north, under the Route 38 Bridge where it crosses the, 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 the river there. And so to give you a little bit of background, this project was able to come to fruition as a result of some advanced planning that took place back in 2009. So when the reconstruction of the Route 38 Lincoln Highway Bridge occurred, the, the city at that time requested that a, a ledge or a concrete pad be attached to the west wall of that bridge. So beneath it, covered under stones right now, is a concrete pad that the bike path will connect to. So that was the foresight that occurred that allowed this path to go forward. And in 2011, the, the city made an application for ITEP grant and received it in 2012. And that became the major funding source for this project. Since 2012, the city's hired HLR as a consulting engineer and through, from 2012 forward, they've been working on the preliminary plans, the environmental impact statement, the project design report, collecting permits from IDNR and IDOT. And then they're now at the point where we're about to produce final plans and we're trying to negotiate the right-of-way with the adjacent property owners. So during that process, while the HLR was working on that aspect of the project, city staff was kind of facilitating conversations with the Park District to make sure that we understood the maintenance requirements of each party and then talking with NIU to make sure that they understood that, or that we were both on the same page when it came to high-water events and that if the path needed to be closed, that NIU would be a partner with us in closing that path. So we're at the point now where we've gotten appraisals of the properties that we are, need to complete the construction of the path. There's, there's two parcels. They're adjacent to each other. And the first one on the board immediately to my left is the, the parcel that we need the most property from. Initially, the city was planning on just purchasing a small fraction of this property and the, the, the reason that we're now asking to purchase the entire property is because it's more cost-effective to purchase the property than build the necessary improvements to the path in order to, to construct it. So what that means is in order to build the path, just requesting a small amount of land from the property owner, we'd have to construct a, a retaining wall. Now, that retaining wall couldn't be a block and it couldn't be modular in any capacity because the river would regularly raise and be running against it. So it would have to be a poured concrete wall. The distance of it would be pretty long and it, most times it'd be an average of about four feet. The entire cost of that wall would have been about three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, including a fence that would be on top of it that would have prevented individuals from climbing on it and getting onto the adjacent property. So as a result of that, we looked at the cost of eliminating the need for that wall. So by purchasing that entire property at a cost of about, I think, forty-six thousand dollars, then it allowed us to grade that slope back up into the property instead of constructing that wall. So that would be the exhibit directly to my left, the property that the city would be, be purchasing. And then additionally, the exhibit behind it, there's a smaller amount of right-of-way and a temporary easement that's needed from the parcel immediately adjacent to that one. So I'm going to flip forward so you can see. So it's a significantly less amount of land that we're requesting from that adjacent property owner. We are going to have an, we have an appraisal completed for that property as well and we're going to enter into negotiations yet with that property owner to come to a final cost of the property. That individual was requesting that we would have the agreement in place with the first property owner because he was interested in understanding the cost that was, the, that the market was going to bear, I guess, at that point. So the request I have then at this time is to, to go ahead with the purchase of the necessary right-of-way to construct this path and at this time, I also like to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Are there questions for John? Alderman Noriko.
Assuming that the city is able to purchase these two properties, when do you estimate that this extension of the bike path would be completed?
We would like to go to letting on November 10th of this year and at that point, we would then begin construction in the spring of 2017.
And I apologize, Dwayne Brown wishes to speak.
Yes, I'll make it brief. I don't object to purchasing the property. What I object to is the money coming out of the motor fuel tax fund to do it. I see a pattern here, same thing we had with the water fund. They kept using the water funds for other, other purchases and when it came down to we needed water lines and mains, they had to increase the water rates. I see the same thing happening here. It's going to come to a point, you keep diverting three hundred thousand dollars for the new police station, sixty thousand dollars to purchase a bike path, and they're going to have to increase the, the fuel rates tax, the motor fuel tax. I think this should come from the general fund and leave the motor fuel tax for the streets. We're, we're getting taxes diverted from the motor fuel tax to other items and our streets are deteriorating on our infrastructure. This needs to go to our streets and infrastructure. I hope you'll remove that and take it out of the, the general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. Further discussion from council? Alderman Favor.
So there was a couple of things I had already emailed you on. One of them is the railroad. We've given them preliminary plans and they've, they've, they've reviewed them. It's not a done deal, but it's preliminarily approved through them.
Yeah. We have received confirmation that the, the comments that we addressed that they have were acceptable to them. We haven't received that in writing yet, but we're confident that they're satisfied with the design.
And then the maintenance post-building of this trail is going to be the Park District? Is that correct?
There's going to be different aspects of the maintenance assigned to different, each organization. So the, the maintenance of the structure and the cost of the electricity of the lights beneath the Route 38 Bridge would be an example of the city's responsibilities and the Park District would be responsible for the general maintenance, the plowing, the resurfacing, cleaning of any culverts that might be clogged up with, with sediment or...
And then, you know, there, another concern, just to voice, is again, safety through the park. The majority of the park is not lit in the evening, although you had said the park is closed after dusk.
Sure. That, that's, that, safety's always a concern. We do have the lighting under the Route 38 Bridge, but it's my understanding that the Prairie Park is closed at dusk. It may not discourage people from using the path at that time. The scope of work with the grant we have right now didn't include money for illuminating the path. There, there may be a path in the future to go forward for another grant if the Park District were willing to partner with us to potentially illuminate the path in that, that capacity.
And then just one other question is, do you know that the total miles, the continuous miles of trail that would be created from the west side to where, I don't know the, I'm trying to, I was trying to think in my mind if it, if it, if it's the path that goes out to, by Castle Bank up to First Street or, or if it continues on, what, what's the continuous miles that this path would then create?
I could, I could find that answer out for you. The, the route of the path after it goes under, under the, underpass, we continue past Hopkins Park and up to the Nature Trail and then back over to First Street. Yeah, I'd probably have to Google Earth and measure it for you.
Okay. Other discussion? Alderman Fanouken?
Just a couple of quick things, Alderman Favor. You know, it'll allow the bike path to be used continuously from Lyons Park on the south all the way up to the connection there at the, the castle, our first national bank on Sycamore Road, but it also then connects to the trail and the path that goes east and goes behind the theater and on over on the Sycamore and Peace Road. So it makes for a very long, and even through Sycamore, there's a connection to the Great Northern Trail there at the east end of Sycamore. So it makes for quite a long connection. This is part of the overall transportation plan, John, with the city and with DSATs and so it's a, I think that's why the motor fuel tax is being used for this particular project.
This is a, this is part of the 2011 bike path plan that the city had adopted through DSATs and to, to your point of, I, I see this kind of as another mode of transportation. While, while certainly our road network is, is deteriorating at times, it's kind of one of the principles of complete streets that we're looking forward to providing accessibility to those who don't necessarily have vehicles and need other methods of transportation.
Thank you. Other discussion? Alderman Marquardt?
I'm just getting it straight in my head. So this would go underneath Route 38 at the bridge?
That's right.
And then come back? Okay.
It'll go under Route 38, under the railroad?
And under the railroad. So kind of by the Vinnie's Pizza?
Right.
It'll, it'll come up on the west side by the East Lagoon.
It connects to the path there.
And connect to that path coming up through there. Okay. And?
Alderman Marquardt?
The, the first parcel here, is that a structure on there currently? I mean, is there, what's, what's on that parcel?
It's a garage and, and there's a driveway that leads to that garage. You want me to bring it closer to you?
I'm pict, okay. I'm picturing where that...
There is no housing that would be displaced by this acquisition.
That's why I was trying to figure out where, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, there is another speaker registered on this issue. Mr. Capitan?
Who is that?
Mr. Capitan is registered.
Oh, okay. Steve?
I just wanted to thank the council for pursuing this. When I was on the council ten years ago, ten, twelve years ago, I was serving on the DSATs committee and was an advocate for doing this. So it really is one, it's an example of those things that don't happen overnight. And it is an important, as was pointed out in terms of the trail extension, it's an important link that really fills in the, the impediment between the far south side of the city and all the way to Sycamore and really actually to St. Charles through the Great Western Trail. And regarding the, the gentleman that was concerned about diverting money from repairing our roads, what I would say is, as, and John alluded to that, is that to the extent that we encourage bike transportation throughout the city, that lessens the burden on the roads and it has an impact in that way, also creating more flexibility for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Other discussion from council? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call then.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marquardt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to... Thank you. Motion carried. I'll ask for a motion to, I'm sorry, Communications. Alderman Finnoukken?
I'd just like to mention that the Kishfest is this week, and I'd encourage our residents to partake in the various activities. I know there was jazz at the Elwood House this evening. Tomorrow night is the Chamber Event out on South Fourth Street. There's various events throughout the week, including the parade Friday night downtown, and then I understand it's Wine and Bacon Palooza on Saturday.
Thank you. Alderman Markort.
I would like to bring up the silent auction wine and cheese reception benefit for the DeKalb Area Women's Center. It's going to be held on Saturday, August 6th, from 3:00 to 5:00 at the House Cafe. It's free and open to the public. There's going to be auction items, tickets, so on and so forth. There's live music, wine and cheese specials, and all the proceeds go to the restoration of the historic Finnish Temperance Hall, home of the DeKalb Area's Women's Center over on State Street over there. I'm not going to murder the Finnish name for it, so, say that again. Majika. Majika. There you go. So I'd like to point that out.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alderman Norreco.
I just wanted to mention that I will be hosting another Ward Five meeting on Thursday, August 4th, from 6:30 to 8:00 in our wonderful, beautiful library, the Builder Family Meeting Room.
Thank you. Alderman Baker?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
City manager?
No report.
City attorney?
No report.
City clerk?
No report.
Assistant city manager, Happenstead?
No report.
Chief Lowry?
No report.
Chris? Chief Hicks?
No report.
Director Davida?
There will be live music again this Thursday at the Farmer's Market from 12:00 to 1:30 at Montbiere Plaza. And we have continued to follow up on the Pokemon Go. We've been working with the Gaming Goat and are building a map online with restaurant venues attached to it so that those playing may wish to come to the local restaurants. Phil Hendrickson of the Gaming Goat had noted that a lot of the players have a limited budget. Their parents are sending them with five or $10. So we're trying to seek a small menu for them. And then the Landmark Commission of this week was canceled, but they are going to be meeting on August 4th, and then the Building Board of Appeals will take up the codes again on August 12th. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Holdman?
I wanted to make everyone aware that there's a Green Living Festival scheduled for Thursday, August 4th, at the DeKalb County Health Department at 2:30 PM. It will be held in the multipurpose room. There'll be a number of workshops, including gardening, healthy food preparation, zero waste, green living, and energy savings. Thank you.
Who's sponsoring that?
I know that the Environmental Commission is involved, and I believe it's through the Health Department.
Very good. Thank you. All right. I would entertain a motion to recess for executive sessions with approval to hold discussion of collective bargaining as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C2, and discussion of pending or imminent litigation as provided for in 5ILCS 120/2C11.
So moved.
It's been moved by Alderman Favor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Roll call, please.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Norreco?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Finnoukken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you.